Welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Good afternoon. We are still in our budget reconciliation and so with the, in working with the mayor, we've put the business item briefings first to get the staff and the presentations kind of through and then afford you as much time as you need to work through reconciling this year's fiscal year budget. As a reminder, the business item briefings are poised to give you an opportunity to hear about something that's going to come before you at a vote. And so we hope to kind of wrestle some things or if there are questions, answer those to make you informed and prepared for that next vote. Again, I highlighted the work session. We know that there's one or two questions focused on schools and we've sent you some information. Donna is prepared to help you walk through that process. There's an item under Roll Call from our Vice Mayor. There are two things under Closed. I'd like to, if Mayor, two things quickly. Today is Tom Martin's 30th wedding anniversary. He's going to be very, very upset that I acknowledged it, but it is. We should acknowledge today. So if you don't see him this evening at the formal docket, he is where he should be. That's with his wife celebrating. And then if it's okay, I was going to have Donna do a pop-up. Remember, we went to New York a couple of weeks ago to work with rating agencies. We got very, very good reviews on our credit and I thought we got the outcome we had actually today. And so I thought, if you don't mind, I'd have her pop up and then I would turn it back to you. Is it okay, Mayor?
That is absolutely fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you. We did sell our refunding bonds this morning. We had 15 bidders. UMB Bank was the winning bid. Our all-in tick is 3.468386. We are just under 3.5%, which is amazing. And our savings is about $4.5 million over the life of those bonds, which is 20 more years. We'll save about $210,000 a year in interest from those savings. And this is spread, it's mostly the general fund, but there is a little piece that is water and sewer fund. But all good news, very, went very well this morning. So thank you. And our ratings were reaffirmed and I will get you those final reports as soon as I get them. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we do have a special guest for us today. Emily Asbury with the Mayor's Youth Council and co-secretary is here. Emily, if you want to stand up and say hi.
Hello, Emily.
Emily is a junior at EC Glass. Thank you for being here, Emily. We're happy to have you. Okay, moving on to our business item briefings. We're starting with revenue sharing, solar and energy storage facilities. This item will appear before council for action on May 14th, 2024. Mr. Tom Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor, Feraldi, Members of Council. And Emily is also our esteemed city planner's sister.
No resemblance.
No, no resemblance. This is a business item briefing on revenue sharing for solar or battery energy storage facilities. The city currently has two of the battery storage facilities in the review process within the city. The first is on Harbor Street. And if you remember back in March of 2023, council approved a conditional use permit for that one. Another, the second is proposed on Carroll Avenue on property that is owned industrial. That facility is by right, so it doesn't require any land use approval from council. So really, why are we here? We're here to determine how the city basically taxes or assesses the equipment associated with these types of facilities. State code gives the localities two options. The first is a reduced machinery and tools tax. Right now, the city's machinery and tools tax is $3 per $100 of assessed value, yet that is reduced by 30% for the first five years. The state code says that if we're going to assess these with the machine and tools tax, you have to do it at 80%, 70%, and 60%. So every five years, the amount you can charge is reduced. In lieu of that, the city can adopt a revenue sharing ordinance, which it ends up equating to $1,400 per megawatt. And that actually, instead of decreasing, increases by 10%. Would increase on July 1st of 2026 and then every five years thereafter. If the city chooses to adopt this revenue sharing ordinance, we would no longer have the ability to assess M&amp;T, machine and tools taxes. We have, so our recommendation to you after it's been reviewed, it's been reviewed by the Commissioner of Revenue, our Director of Finance, we've had outside counsel, we got a lot of help from our Office of Economic Development in doing this, and we are recommending that you adopt the revenue sharing ordinance. This ordinance would remain in place, the revenue share would remain in place even if it was sold to a entity like AEP, which would then fall under the State Corporation Commission, which would be an even further reduction in machinery and tool stack. So the revenue sharing ordinance really gives the city a more stable revenue stream for these types of facilities. This ordinance will appear before council for a vote on May the 14th on your general business section.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council?
Just a quick question.
Congressman Halkison?
You said under general business, so it's not a public hearing by any?
Correct.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on. Rezoning B5, General Business District B-5C, General Business District Conditional and I-2, light, or is it L? Is it L or I?
I.
Okay. Light Industrial Districts to B-5C, General Business District Conditional, 2731, 2735, and 2739, Ward's Road. This item will appear before council for action on May 14th, 2024. Rachel Fresh Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council. The purpose of this petition is to allow the redevelopment of these sites into a gas station with convenience store and also a light auto repair facility. The proposed traffic improvements shown on the concept plan will also be constructed by the petitioner per the voluntarily submitted proffer. The four existing entrances on Ward's Road would be consolidated into one entrance to provide access to the site. Another entrance will also be provided on Glass Avenue, which would be widened as part of this project. A left-turn taper, right-turn taper, and medians are proposed to be installed in Ward's Road. These improvements are consistent with the initiatives outlined in the STARS report, which is currently being prepared by VDOT. The city's traffic engineer concurred with these findings in the submitted traffic study. The proposed rezoning should have limited impact on the area and would fit in with the zoning of the surrounding properties. The proposed uses are similar in nature to those nearby and to those that have been previously located on this site. The proffered improvements to Ward's Road should mitigate any traffic impacts and improve safety in the corridor. Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition at their meeting on April 10th, and this item would return for a public hearing and council action on May 14th.
Great. Any questions or comments? Congressman Halkison?
You know, this is, appears to be a wonderful project. There were several pieces of commercial property that were out there, the car wash, the old western sizzling or western steer or whatever was, well, I guess that's one up. The old gas station that was there and putting it all into one. And, you know, it passed Planning Commission flying colors and hopefully it'll pass City Council in flying colors because it's fantastic to take business property and not asking for business property to change to more apartments, but business property that wants to be another business and consolidating with several of the lots that are there and make something fairly nice and big and being able to then, as they own the property, they're thinking about saying, instead of all of these individual entrances, I think you said, Rachel, that there were, instead of having four ingress and egress, there are going to have one kind of nicer one. Is that correct?
Correct. They'll consolidate into one on Ward's Road and provide an additional one at Glass Avenue.
And so with that, I think it's fantastic and hope it passes unanimously in a couple of weeks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the 2024 School Board Appointment Process. Ms. Alicia Finney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm on this side of the dais this afternoon to talk to you about the School Board Appointment Process for 2024. Ahead of our upcoming public hearings, I wanted to go, get before you all to outline the process as well as receive any input that you might have. The goal here is to really find and agree upon a process that you all are proud of and one that will breed the best candidates for the schools and our community. Every year, council considers appointments to each three districts. This year, the incumbents are Randall Trost in District One, Dr. Atul Gupta in District Three, and first appointed in 2015, Dr. Sharon Carter in District Two, has served the maximum number of terms and ineligible to serve again. After this afternoon's bib, I'll be heading up the street to the school board to present this to them on the 7th, hoping to reach their audience. The following Tuesday, we'll hold our first public hearing. Historically, council has elected to hold over on the public hearing to allow citizens more time to apply, so we will schedule that for you all. And then on May 28th, we are scheduled to close the public hearing. Last year, council elected at that time to begin the selection of candidates, so we'll hold space at that meeting on the 28th for you all to do so. However, that will not be the end of it. You'll still have two weeks with applications and then we'll formally close the, or finalize the selection during general business on June 11th. Between those two meetings of June 11th and June 25th, I will be reaching out to you all to figure out times to interview. We will conduct interviews held in open meeting. And then on the June 25th, appointments will be made during general business contingent and bond successful background checks. So what can you expect if you are interested candidate hoping to apply? We are currently accepting applications and have been since this time last year, since our process closed last year. State code dictates that if your name isn't said into the record during our public hearings, then you cannot be considered for appointment. During the public hearings, applicants are encouraged to come before you all to speak on their qualifications as well as parents and community members to state their support or opposition for candidates. Interviews will be held in open meeting. That means they'll be open to the public and livestreamed. And council deliberations and appointments will also be held in a meeting, in an open meeting. And then state and national criminal background checks for the selected. So what kind of information do we collect on the School Board application? Well, we do collect the basic contact information, so that's email address, physical address, warden district, and occupation. We also ask two questions. What experience do you offer as a candidate for the Lynchburg School Board? And what do you feel you would contribute to the Lynchburg School Board and to the community if appointed? There is an option to upload a resume, although not mandatory, and past councils have elected not to make these available to the public citing personnel records under the Freedom of Information Act. Again, this process should be one that you're proud of, and there's also a added benefit of getting ahead of, before the process starts, to the public so that they know what they are signing up for, if they are interested in signing up. So at this time, I welcome any feedback that you all might have or any input on the process.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. I do have a question related to what you need at this point. Is there specific guidance you need?
I'm just looking to get head nods to see that you like this process, the ones that we've outlined. Again, the public will be signing up and I just want to make sure that they, it's communicated what they can expect when they sign up and that we're not talking about the process halfway through the process.
Thank you.
Okay. Congressman Halkison?
You know, last year, I think, you know, Alicia reminded me, especially if we have several that apply in each district, it'd probably be best if we, on our voting process, that what we did is we were able to vote, you know, vote, you know, on who we're having as a, you know, having a ballot basically that says, hey, so it's not just down to one person, yes or no. But what we can do is just like we do for the council vote for Mayor and Vice Mayor, we have a ballot that says, here's the people that are voting for this person. And then the person that gets a majority, they may get the majority and they're on right now, or they may get three votes and somebody gets two votes and somebody gets one vote and you drop off the lowest vote getter. I think that would be a good thing because last year, I think there was a couple, a couple that maybe, you know, it may have been between two good people, but one person wasn't even up for a vote after the interview, after that process. Once they go through all that, they should at least be able to be on the ballot. I think that would be an improvement. I don't know what you, if that was an easy fix that you can do.
Just to jog everyone's memory, currently, what you all do in general business is somebody makes a motion for an appointment. There's a second and then you vote. If that is a majority vote, then that person is appointed to the school board. I will look to the city attorney to help me understand this. If we do a ballot process for this, is there anything that we would be out of our rules procedure about?
So the real problem with doing a ballot type process is you risk having less than a four number of votes. So in my mind...
But then one drops off and then you revote.
So if you were to do a process where whoever was appointed, there would be four votes, then I think you could make, make that work in some way. So you have to keep in mind though, City Council's rules of procedure only permit one motion on the table at a time for a main motion. So if you have multiple nominations as quote unquote motions, I think that could create confusion and really you're going to end up having a bunch of motions where they inevitably would fail and they'd keep coming back to do the same appointment. So in my mind, if you were to do something where you were wanting to consider all candidates, you would, and that, that in my mind would be the idea of being able to vote on everyone who's nominated, is each time someone's name is called, council in and of itself just makes a vote to determine if that person would be appointed to the school board, if that makes sense.
So I think though, if, you know, if you have the majority, you know, if you have several people and then you never even, you know, because the problem can be is, well, somebody makes the motion first and you never got to discuss another candidate. And so I think just from openness, transparency, and people that put their names in, I think people that have gone through the interview, we shouldn't just say, okay, we don't even get to vote on you because of the fact that somebody made a motion for somebody else first. I just think it'd be, and I don't think it gets that tedious, what you're saying, because you can, you can look at the ballot for District One, then you do one for District Two. Here are the people that are up. So I think it could be fairly easy, couldn't it, Alicia?
It's easy to get ballots. I do wonder though if it is a 3-3-3 or a 1-1-1 throughout.
So it could be a 3-3-3. Obviously, we have seven people.
Okay. But if it's 1-1-1, if you each vote for somebody, I don't know how you would...
And then the lowest vote getter drops off and then you revote, just like we do for Mayor and Vice Mayor. And you can do that via the nominations. So I just think it'd be, there can be, there should be a way that we can actually give them due course. I just think maybe last year, we didn't have, you know, maybe necessarily, you know, I'm grateful for the improvements. I just think we could make it one more step of improvement.
Congressman Dola?
You know, I just don't think that it would even be fair to have somebody on the ballot that you've decided that just isn't appropriate or isn't a fit.
Well, I mean, we could nominate just like...
And then what if you have 10 people on the ballot, then you're going to be, it could be a real cumbersome process, I think. I don't know what...
But just like, it's no different than what we do for Mayor and Vice Mayor. I mean, you have, people make a nomination...
We're just talking about a couple of people here. We're not talking about a handful.
But for each, for each one, what, you wouldn't have to have all of them on there, but you would nominate who you want to be on the ballot and then you vote for those two or three and then one of them drops.
I misunderstood because I was of the impression that you were saying everybody who...
Who is nominated, yeah, just like we do on...
Who is interviewed, is what you're saying.
Oh, no, no, who we nominate, who, who, once they've met the interview and we think, yes, they are a worthy candidate, well, we'll nominate them or don't nominate them. It may just be one person nominated and it passes unanimously. Fine.
Councilmember missions?
I'm going to pass this down. This is from last year. This is what I proposed last year as an option for appointing school board members. And I'm just going to cut straight through the fog on some of this, right? The reality is, this is the most important appointment that we make. Selecting our school board is more important than appointing a mayor or vice mayor. That's the reality, right? Because while the mayor may run the meetings, at the end of the day, she's only one vote and the seven of us decide, right? Same thing, Vice Mayor, only one vote and the seven of us decide, the majority decides. Outside of all of our committees, boards, I just saw the Vice Mayor point to the City Manager as the most important appointment we make, so to speak. I understand that too. This decision right here should not be left up to parliamentary tricks and games to prevent or block people from being considered, right? So by voting by ballot, using a ballot process to vote, having some sort of nominating process to select who could be eligible for the ballot, it will streamline things and it will make a situation where we all get an opportunity to discuss why we support a certain candidate, why we nominate a certain candidate. You know, the maximum probably that we'd end up with if we set a rule as such would be seven, because we could set a rule where one council member could only nominate one candidate and it would be no different than a mayoral or vice mayoral election where we end up having to decide between the seven of us, because the reality is in a mayoral or vice mayoral election, every one of us could nominate ourselves and then we would have to sort it out. That could happen. But if we leave this up to, you know, whoever the mayor recognizes first, because that's what happens when we do it by motion, what it could do is prevent discussion and debate about particular candidates that may be somebody worth vigorously fighting for to be in charge of our schools, to be over our schools, right? I would not want to leave such an important decision down to political theater, pre-planned motions, and rehearsed scripts to prevent people from being considered for the school board.
I appreciate that input because the easiest way to do this is to leave it to the voters. I fundamentally believe that this is nothing more than exactly what council member missions just offered, is to control the process, to purify the process. Last year, we had a motion for someone in District One, substitute motion, which then failed, and then the main motion prevailed. I also find it interesting that the two members of council seemingly advocate for this are the, are on the other side of that substitute motion. If you can't get four votes, you shouldn't move on. That I agree with, no doubt. I would point out though, that by articulating, at least in my assessment, I'm curious what the city attorney would say, by articulating all of these procedures for school board, why should they not be replicated for every other board appointment we do? Because it would not be equal treatment, at least from a separate entity. I mean, they're, they're their own political entity, not unlike, maybe the rezoning, that they have their own statutory authority granted by state code to take action outside of our authority. So how could we have a separate process for this and not it be applied for everybody else?
What I would submit, Mr. Vice Mayor, is I think you're absolutely right. You know, you, City Council should want, where it can, to try to standardize or have a, I guess, a normal, for better way of putting it, a standard or normal way for making its appointments versus special ways for this, special ways for that, because it is, it's unfair treatment. And really, what it comes down to, brass tacks, so to speak, is a majority of council rules. So what I worry about is, is if you have multiple nominations of multiple school board appointments, it's likely you all, you all won't, you won't end up at a majority and that's what I worry about and there'll be arguments about whether or not that person was appointed or not.
I would also go further into it and just simply state that it's worked in the past. It has worked and continues to work. The concern about prescripted motions and re-scripted X, Y, and Z, I find, I think the pot's calling the kettle black on that because we've, all of us have come up with a plan, talked with council members to achieve it, and then we have a motion and then either it fails or passes. How many preconceived motions did my colleagues come up with last year? How many preconceived scripts were come up last year that if one thing happens, we'll say this, if one thing happens, we'll say that? No. If you get four votes, you're in. If you have the motion to nominate someone and they get the votes, they're in. But by the way, all of this gets thrown to the wayside if you simply have the voters elect who they want to control, the elect, the school board, if who they want to control a school closure process, who they want controlling, who hires a superintendent, where's the division go? They are the ones who are directly responsible. Because by coming up with all these parliamentary tricks and procedures, it's to suit a political end. That's what these are done. That's where the convention system comes from. That's where the bird machine comes from. This process comes from that indirectly. I don't think, quite frankly, that Councilmember Missions went to, you know, bird machine and how did it all work? No, but that's where this concoction comes from, historically speaking. The number one way we can do this is to take ourselves out of it, let the voters decide. Be that as it may, I can't control that or change it. All I can tell you is that right now, the simplest way to do it is to have someone motion. If you want to amend the motion, you can consider two other people per appointment. That's three. If you get four votes, you're in.
Madam Mayor, first of all, would it benefit the council deliberation during our general business, after you've interviewed candidates, to make the address at Roll Call style? So you all say who you are leaning towards and then after the discussion, then we would close discussion and then open it up for motions at that time? Would that, that help ease any of this?
Vice Mayor?
If I may, I recall doing something along those lines even when I was the only member of council seeking to have this process done in the public. I remember vividly saying, since this is going to go behind closed doors and nobody in the public's going to know who I might want or not, here's all the people I'm at least interested in interviewing. Here's all the people I want to talk to. I was the only one on this dais to say that. So I stand by it. I think that's a fine way to do it. I plan, I think I did it last year, I would do it again. This, here's who I want to interview, for better or worse.
I think you mentioned after the interviews, because that's what we did last year, who we want to interview, right? So we're still saying who we want to interview. And what you're saying is that maybe that what you could do is say, okay, here's who I'm leaning towards, voting in favor of. You know, again, I do think it's, you know, Matt says that we can't have differences and everything needs to be the same. I've been here for, we've never done some of these things. Do we televise hearings for people on Planning Commission? Do we interview them? Do we interview who we're interviewing in Planning Commission? Do we, are we required to have their names listed in a public hearing before they're even eligible for possibility of appointment for the GLTC board, like we are required to by state law with the school board? Do we have open hearings where we're talking to the people of who we're contemplating? You know, I think Councilman Missions brings up a very valid point, that this is very different. This is, they have lots of authority... This is, they have lots of authority, we're gonna discuss here shortly, and we can do whatever. I mean, I just, I don't like to see us saying whoever gets nominated first is done, because I think we should have fairness for the folks that put in their names. In a few minutes, we're gonna be talking about the proposed budget reconciliation and what can happen with regarding schools and their funding. You know, when we're looking at people that we're gonna appoint for $140 million budget, I think it's probably prudent to have people that go back to, like when Sterling was on there, had a budget like this, Sterling, right? As opposed to a budget like this. Eight pages for $140 million bucks. We get eight pages listed on a, basically a note card versus a budget that actually says what things are gonna be. With that amount, later on today, council is gonna say, well, maybe we could give them more money. Well, guess what? The school board has the say. If we give them more money, they can still close the schools. If we don't give them the more money, they can still keep those schools open. It's up to the school board. We do not have the ability, and quite frankly, it's illegal for us to jump in and say, here's what you must do. So with that being the case, it is very important. And so let's not trivialize this by saying, you know, oh, it's just a, you know, we only want to have one thing, because I think we should make it as fair and as open as possible. You know, if you have several people, it doesn't have to be all the candidates, but if you have a few people that I think rose to the top, I think what we can do is say, let's figure out those two, let's nominate those two and have a vote on them. And if there's two or three, or how many ever people are willing to nominate, what you do is drop off the low vote getter. If it's a three, one, 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 well, what do you do? One of these ones drop off. And how you drop them off, via Robert's Rules of Order, you pull a name out of a hat, since they're all one, and say, well, this one drops off, okay? You revote. Now this one gets four, and this one gets two, and this one gets one. Well, got four votes and you're done. So I don't think it's that difficult to use some kind of nomination in a ballot method, so, and you can only vote for the folks that are nominated, and us behind the dais would then have to nominate somebody, and then at that time, you have at least the ability for saying, here's who we think. And what it does is once drops off, the low vote getter drops off until you get a majority of four. It may be a couple votes, and you can't just hold out, because somebody's gotta drop off, the low vote getter drops off. So I don't think it's that difficult. I don't think it's a, you know, a point of, shouldn't be a point of contention, because it is such a serious position. They get to decide what they're doing. Educating our kids are critical. Making sure that there's the resources there, making sure that they're following their job of what they should as a school board member. That is pretty critical, and I think we should take it as seriously as we possibly can. Having the little positions to improve, I think it's always wise.
Councilmember Missions?
Couple things. First of those things is, is there a method by which a mayor of Lynchburg can be selected, Mr. Attorney, without four votes? Without a majority of council?
So I suppose if it was those present and voting and there were less than four votes, you could still have a majority, but it may not necessarily be four.
So you could have a-
So and remember, remember, though, too, there's that only, there's only that one office you all consider at the time that you make that decision under the rules of procedure. So there aren't multiple people that are being considered on the same floor at the same time. So that, I think, is a key difference when you're choosing mayor versus, say, 15 individuals that may be up for a school board consideration.
Now, do you really think that we would not do it by district? Because aren't we required to?
Sure.
So we couldn't consider 15 people for three districts at once?
Well, I suppose it depends how many you consider for whatever district it is that's there. So if you have your district and you have multiple people that are in there, if you have a free-for-all nomination process, I think that is what the issue would be.
Okay. Do you remember how many people we had considered last year for each district?
Not off the top of my head. I wanna say there's eight or nine total, and the majority of that was in District One, I believe.
So I just want to make it clear about what we're talking about. There's a lot of, kind of, almost absurd hypotheticals being thrown out there. Oh, consider 15 people or whatever for, no. We would absolutely have to do this by District One, we're required to, because we can't just appoint somebody that lives in District Three into the District One position. That would not be okay or acceptable. You know, I'm totally open to changes or amendments to what I passed out. You know, we had this discussion last year. It's critically important that we do this, and we do it in a way where cronyism can't infect our school board, right? That's critically important. I understand and appreciate the vice mayor's discussion about the elected school board. The reality is, that's not something we can do anything about. We can't do anything about that right now as a city council. So it's kind of irrelevant at this point. What we're talking about right here, right now, is a method to nominate and select our school board appointments for next year. That's it. And there may be three people really worth considering, right? Which would be better than a motion and a substitute. Three people worth debating, which would be better than a motion and a substitute. And, you know, the other thing that was interesting to hear about today was also the different types of boards, and we gotta treat different boards differently. If I remember correctly, and I would ask that maybe we could have the minutes researched for this, Madam Clerk, I do believe that there was a discussion about standardizing how this was done across the board with transparency for all the boards last year. There was a discussion about that, but was there any action? Obviously not, right? We have one process right now that requires a public hearing. We have one process right now that we are doing out in the public. I am totally open to deliberating every board and commission in open session. I have no issues with that whatsoever. But the reality is, right now, we should not leave the fate of our children up to a motion and a substitute, because that is how it is. Literally, a motion and a substitute is the only way, the only options. So we're gonna be down to two options. That's it. You know, when I hear about some of the things that I've heard about recently, like elementary teachers on a field trip, getting beaten by students to where the teachers have to call 911, that happened very recently. This is a serious decision. We don't need to have this left up to parliamentary games and gimmicks. If that's the case, then our entire rules of procedure are parliamentary games and gimmicks. This is no different than the way that we try to appoint a mayor or a vice mayor, as far as the voting, the by-ballot goes. I think it's the best way to go, but it's up to council to decide from this point.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
I would only submit that there is no parliamentary games or gimmicks. It's a simple mathematical equation. Who can get to four? Whether that's concocted in the background about, hey, I'll motion for this, would you second it? Sure. And then we vote. If you don't get four votes, my game or gimmick that I just came up with doesn't work. I would also say, I don't, quite frankly, think leaving this process up to be drafted and then, oh, wait a minute, submitted and shared with us the day we're considering it, talking about not informing your colleagues. Yeah, you did it a year ago, but you waited till now to share it that you wanted to resubmit it. I don't think that, I think that we could have had some forewarning about it, that you could have shared it with us, say, hey, guys, I really think this is a great idea, would you want to sit down over coffee and talk about it? No, it's shared with this as a shotgun negotiation tactic to say, oh, you know, this is just gonna be woe is me, I can't get my way, I'm gonna try to submit a process. I would venture to guess that this is nothing more than what you're articulating or advocating against. And I would ask the mayor, I would say, the thing appropriate to do right now, unless anyone else has something they want to offer, is, is just poll council. Where do you want to go? Because the clerk needs direction and, and we have other items to get to.
Well, I, we, well, hold on, we've heard from you. Is there anybody that hasn't, has, that hasn't spoken yet? What I would like to do, to give her, to give you direction, Madam Clerk, is, we've heard from a couple people, as far as, obviously, what they would like to do that's different, but in the interest of time, just for consensus purposes, we can just go down the line and ask if, who's okay with leaving things as they are? And if there's a majority that wants to make a change, then obviously that will dictate any, any direction that you need to take beyond now. Dr. Wilder?
I'd like to leave this, just the matter that you presented to us today. Thank you.
Councilman Dolan?
I'm comfortable with the way it is.
Councilman Huggins?
So back to the discussion that the vice mayor just stated. On this, I think this is appropriate time. This isn't a time to vote on it, because this is a business item briefing, right?
I'm just getting a consensus for the direction.
Totally get it, totally get it. So with that, it, so what was stated is that this was, you know, trying to act like it was just thrown in out of the blue. It's a business item briefing, this is the first time this is being brought up for council discussion. So this is absolutely the appropriate time. I know people like to act like something is more than it is. When you look and you read all this, I think the only difference is, is really number F3, where F3 on Councilmember Missions' sheet says that you'd make a nomination. It's only really a difference. All this other stuff we're already doing. We're doing all of those things. It's F3 that says, rather than just whoever gets to say the motion first, it's just like now, just a second ago. The mayor just said, oh, you've already spoken to this issue, sure, you can't speak again. But meanwhile, you just allowed the vice mayor to speak numerous times on it, especially when there's something different. That's part of what you do in having discussion about something, especially when it's a business item briefing. I think with this, we can easily look at adding just a simple nomination. All we're looking at is adding F3. F3 where you nominate and then you vote. I think that's about the only difference, even though there's a whole litany of things. If you go through it and read it, I think you'll find that F3 is, instead of somebody making one motion that says, I want Billy to be on the school board in District Three, and somebody says, nope, I want a substitute motion, I want Johnny, well, guess what? We can't have another substitute, because then parliamentarily, you can't. So I think having a nomination process makes it open a little fairer. Secondly, just by, you know, running a meeting, whoever the presiding officer is, if they call on one person first and then intentionally call on one person second, it kind of throws that aside, because each person gets to say, I want to nominate this person, or I don't want to nominate that person. And then you vote, the lowest vote getter drops off. I think it's only adding F3, which is meaning that we're nominating something, somebody. So I think that would be a great process to work. All the rest of them, I think, are what Alicia already laid out. So all of A, B through E are all about the same. The only thing different is F3, where council would nominate somebody, and then we vote on them in a ballot.
Councilmember Missions? I, we, I'm assuming we know where you stand. Do you want me to, for consensus?
Well, it's nice to hear you admit that you operate off assumptions, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate you calling on me. So anyways, going back to what Councilmember Huggins said and Vice Mayor Frawley said, you know, I really appreciated Vice Mayor Frawley mentioning the quiet part out loud when he talked about doing things behind the scenes, right? And that's the purpose that this is trying to prevent, right? That's the purpose that this is trying to prevent. Because at the end of the day, if we have nominees for the school board and then we vote by ballot from those nominees, it's going to limit that ability for that to happen. Because council would then have to approve every nominee. We would have to endorse every nominee moving forward. So we would have to have consensus on nominees to be selected by ballot. So I can't think of an even better way to do it, because then what you're saying is, everybody that we're selecting from, the majority of council has said, these people are fit for the school board. These people are fit for the school board. And then we select from that group, that small group. I can't think of a better way to get a more quality candidate. If we've got to do it this way and we've got to appoint it, there's no better way to do it. You know, I appreciate what our attorney said, that there, there could potentially be a path. What's a quorum for city council? Five, is that right?
A quorum could be four.
Four. So four, if we had four is the minimum, you'd have to have three votes. If you had five, you'd have to have three votes. So that's the only potential way that you could have somebody. Just to kind of clear the air here on some of the discussion points that have been thrown out, that, you know, you gotta get to four. You'd have to get to four in this process, too. Matter of fact, the process that we do right now, you could also select a school board member without four votes if we didn't have at least six members. We could have a quorum of four, selecting our school board members. So what the vice mayor said, you gotta get to four, but with no change in our process or procedures, you actually can't, there's ways you can do it without getting to four, right? Because we could have not a quorum show up. But we all take this pretty seriously, and I'm pretty sure all seven of us are gonna be here to consider and appoint school board members. Nothing more that I have to say about this. This was not any kind of shotgun negotiation tactic, as the vice mayor liked to call it. You know, I was prompted, I'll leave it at that. And this is the same thing that I put forward last year. Apparently, there was no appetite then. If there's no appetite now, so be it. But the kids in our schools are worth fighting for. Their education is worth fighting for. There's political differences in how we get there. I understand that. Some people think more money educates kids. I don't agree with that, right? But at the end of the day, the people running our school is critically, it's critically important that we put the best candidates forward. Using a method to nominate candidates and then select from those nominees is going to ensure that we have a great candidate, no matter which nominee gets selected.
Councilman Taylor?
We have a nomination process, right? We will continue to nominate candidate, the best candidates for the job.
What is that nomination process?
The motion and a second, and a majority vote.
Again, a motion and a second. That's not nominees.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Yeah, I'm done.
I'm, I'm fine with the way that it is, so if that gives you direction, then I think we're good. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the work session agenda items, the fiscal year '25 proposed budget reconciliation, Mr. Bendah or Ms. Witt? Are you coming first?
I continue to say, Madam Mayor, so one of the things that we had to review, we had our two public hearings last week, we had about, with one person for water and about 25 for the budget itself. Those are rough numbers. And what we heard coming out of it from you and your peers, I knew that there was a majority of you that was interested in keeping the two schools, TC Miller and Sandusky Elementary, open. And so in the ensuing week, I've had some conversations with each of you about ways to do so. And those conversations are further fleshed out by our wonderful finance, Chief Financial Officer and our budgeteers back here. And so today, we're gonna talk to you about how best to do so. And I sent you an email yesterday talking about ADM and numbers and some, I hope it was somewhat understandable. So the 3.2 may be less than, than what's required to keep the two schools open, but Madam Mayor, I'd ask that Chief Financial Officer Donna Witt, who had tremendous success today in the markets, also talk to us about that option.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. So as it was laid out by the school board, 3.2 million is what was needed to keep Sandusky and TC Miller Elementary Schools open. So there's a lot going on the General Assembly. So we had a governor's budget, we had a General Assembly budget that was vetoed by the governor, so they're getting back together for a compromise. We have no idea what that looks like, okay? So worst-case scenario, and just to throw this out there, kudos to Reed Wodoka and Sonia Jamies. We did work together, we, budget staff, we kind of put what we thought the state numbers were going to be. Reed and Sonia put together, and thankfully, they were the same numbers. So just want to put that out there, that there were discussions with schools on these numbers. So worst-case scenario, when you look at this, the state ADM January count tool is what was submitted by schools for their proposed budget with one caveat. The caveat they made was the average daily membership was based on what they thought their projected enrollment would be of 7,376. So the state revenue, straight by the governor's budget, was 67.2 million. Using the school's updated enrollment number, it would be 68.8 or an additional, right at $1.6 million. So if they would go back and adopt basically the governor's budget, schools would still get about $1.6 million based on enrollment, okay? Best-case scenario, so you look at this, the state ADM January count tool is exactly what I showed you before. That was in January. The state, the Department of Education, updates that count tool in March, utilizing the same average day membership, but with the additional funds the General Assembly put forward. And if that came to fruition exactly as they proposed it, the schools would get about $4.7 million in additional state revenue. Now, the other piece of that is the 7,376 ADM that the schools based on enrollment. If that came to fruition, based on General Assembly action, they would get an additional $1.7 million just because of the enrollment is higher. So that would be about $6.4 million. So this would be best-case scenario. Now, do we know if this is going to happen? No. Do we? It probably end up somewhere between the two? I don't know. So they're not going to, the General Assembly won't get back together until the middle of May. So at this point, these are our two scenarios. One is based on just the governor's budget and the other one is based on General Assembly action. So again, best-case scenario could be up to $6.4 million. Now, in the General Assembly's budget, just to put this out there.
Is that in here? No, we're happy to upload. I have a piece of ice on my mouth, sorry. We were putting this together today, and so as soon as she finishes, we will upload it.
I think I was trying to find it.
Jeff, we're going to email.
Good deal, thank you.
About, Mayor, Greg's going to email it to you now so that you can look at it on your computers.
Thank you.
Okay, so in the General Assembly's budget, should that move forward, included was a 3% salary increase from the state for SOQ positions. So the state funding of that salary increase would be about $1.1 million, and the local match would be about $1.4 million for a total cost of 2.5. So this is part of the General Assembly's budget. In the governor's budget, you may remember, there was a 1% bonus, but General Assembly changed that. So again, don't know where we'll end up, but just want to make sure you understand that this is a piece of that General Assembly state funding. So, funding options. So should council want to move forward, knowing schools, the number's $3.2 million? In the worst-case scenario, the additional funding would be $1.6 million, which means there would be a need of $1.6 million should council choose to take in consideration additional state funds. Okay, all options out there. So there's two projects that we're looking at, should council want to do either a full 3.2 or the 1.6. So the White Rock Elementary School was $3.5 million that we cash funded, okay? And we appropriated that this current year. Also, there's a computer-aided dispatch replacement project that is also appropriated in 2024, and there's $4.7 million held on the line of credit for that project. Now, just this week, that project was put on hold. They've decided that the vendors that responded aren't, probably aren't where they want to go, so this project's put on hold, which would free up that line of credit. Everybody good? So in the worst-case scenario, you could use the $1.6 million cash from White Rock Elementary, and then to make that project whole, we would move line of credit funding from the computer-aided dispatch replacement to make the White Rock project whole. And there would be capacity to do that. Best-case scenario, should they get up to $6.4 million, there would be the additional funds that would come from the state, should council choose to do it that way, to keep the schools open with the 3% salary increases being covered. Did I lose anybody? Our recommendation is to set aside the $1.6 million and a general fund reserve for schools non-closure until the state adopts a budget and final funding is identified. But this would not transfer those funds to the schools. It would be held on the city's books until everything cleared out and we know exactly what's going to happen, and then council gets to decide what happens to that $1.6 million. Questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilor Misson?
While the CAD system has been put on hold, it's not being canceled.
It's not being canceled.
Correct.
But right now, there's not, there's not a product that they're ready to move forward with. So that, we wouldn't hold line of credit for a project, we don't know how long it's going to take to move forward.
Got it. So what we're considering here with that would be then combining 1.6 cash with some from the line of credit that was intended to be for the dispatch system for public safety and...
That would keep, that would keep the White Rock project hold. So that would fully fund that.
And we would, we would then be borrowing for the White Rock project.
Correct.
Where we never intended to do that in the first place.
Correct.
Because these projects were selected by us regarding what we were going to do with the extra cash essentially that we had, right?
Yes.
Fund balance.
Correct.
So surplus, right?
Correct.
So now we're going from, the White Rock project then moves from a kind of cash-on-hand situation to partially financed situation?
Correct.
Would we move into bond financing for that in the future? Is that how we would?
Correct. Because we would need cash to set aside for schools. And then the other half of that 1.6 would come from potential state funding.
So, but this is, there's a lot more moving parts here than, than what we're talking, because now we're talking about borrowing for a project that we didn't even discuss borrowing as an option for. This was kind of like a, we got money left over, we didn't have a majority that was willing to give it back to the taxpayers in any way, shape, or form, so we pay for all these projects, right? And that's kind of what happened. So, you know, it's a completely different situation when we're borrowing money now for a project that we intended to pay for with cash that we had on hand.
It's an option.
It's an option, right? But I just want to make it crystal clear, what we're doing now is now we're moving into where we're borrowing, we're going into debt to do this project. You know, could it be the political hit that would come with canceling the White Rock Elementary School project to fund the schools? Potentially, maybe that's why. I don't know. But there's just a lot of moving parts here. What about the 1.6 million that we have sitting in the contingency reserve for city schools right now?
Oh, that's 24. We're talking about 25.
Okay, but we're talking about 24. I'm talking, we have not spent that 1.6 million that's in the contingency reserve for schools. We have not transferred that, right?
That's correct. That's...
So that would be fund balance.
That's out there for a vote for tonight.
But if it doesn't get used, that would be fund balance for coming back to the city for next year for 25, correct?
Depending on how their year-end plays out.
How, what do you mean by how their year-end plays out? If we don't vote to appropriate those funds to city schools and they spend it, is that a problem? To appropriate it to a category?
Well, it should be left.
Yeah, it should be left, right?
I'm not the school CFO.
I understand that. We've had plenty of discussions about this, and I've expressed my interest and desire for you to be the school CFO.
Nope.
But the...
It's a sure ticket to retirement.
The, the, but in reality, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they shouldn't be touching that money because it's in contingency reserve classification. And we would have to move it. They shouldn't be using it for instruction, they shouldn't be using it for transportation, they shouldn't be using it for operations and maintenance. That would be, for all intents and purposes, not kosher, right?
Correct.
And if that was the case, then that would be left over as a fund balance that would come back to the city, right, for 25?
Correct.
And we could use that as the 1.6 million for next year.
With council action.
Thank you.
Would you vote for that?
The contingency reserve?
If schools open for another year, would you vote for that?
If we did not transfer the contingency reserve tonight, I would absolutely support the contingency reserve, fund balance, going to schools next year.
Out of curiosity, Ms. Witt, how large is the overall surplus we considered in December?
15 million, I believe.
And there was a comment, 15. There was a comment made that there was no appetite whatsoever to use it for tax relief and capacity and return to the taxpayers, but it's my recollection, we did something with trash and cart fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. How much did we plan to go into debt for the computers?
$4.7 million.
And how much are we considering going into debt on White Rock Elementary now?
Now?
With this proposal?
If we did this, 1.6.
So there's a difference mathematically between 1.6 and 4.7, correct? So we're not going as much into debt as we originally intended. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So by not going into debt as we, to the extent we were going to go into, it's actually more fiscally responsible to pursue this path because we were going less into debt, correct? At least for the amount, the amount going into debt. And also, further question, we didn't cancel this project. That was the vendor causing issues that pushed it back.
Well, it wasn't really, it's just that with the results that they had, they weren't ready to move forward, is I think politically how I should say it.
Was it the city wasn't ready to move forward or the vendor?
Well, there was a number of vendors that did respond. After all the vetting was completed, they didn't feel comfortable with going with any of those vendors.
But it was not a matter, but it was not a matter of finances?
No.
No, in phase LBD.
Okay. But it, so it was not a matter of finances, we're going less into debt overall, and we're solving an issue for our constituents for this year.
Just remember, at some point, we will have to replace that CAD system.
Understood, 100%.
Maybe not right now, but we will have to.
And I, and I agree with you.
We'll have to figure that out later.
Certainly. But it's not a matter of finances that got canceled. We're going less into debt overall, and we did use some of that surplus to go to tax relief. So just wanted to offer that for our consideration. I think it's, I commend our city staff for working with us to find this opportunity here. We're going less into debt than we had originally planned. If we were to keep that $4.7 million in the capacity and use the one-time money this year for the schools, the 1.6 that we're considering tonight, which is this year, and not do this plan, would we, we would still be having that debt capacity and going into debt on the computer system. So yet again, we're, it's further financially responsible to do this plan than it is to do just using the 1.6 for this year for the schools to go to next year. I spoke really fast, folks at home, I'm sorry, it made sense in my head. I hope it made sense to you, but it, the long and short of it is, it is more financially responsible to do this plan than it is, although it's creative to what Councilmember Misson offered, it is better to do it what was presented by staff, even though I don't think they intended for it to be met that way. Hope that makes sense.
So I want to jump in here a couple of things because political spin is just so frustrating to me. And it just, it just is such a disservice to our citizens. So the reality is, the schools needed help, and last week, we let them know, the two schools specifically, the families, we made, you know, the staff, the children, they needed to know that there was going to be a plan in place before they had to close down, and that's what we were offering them. And you outlined tonight that the state could come in and we may not have to give them any money possibly, or we are prepared to give a solution if we have to come to the table with money. And we're discussing that tonight, so that's what we're doing. Councilman Taylor, actually, is the person who suggested that we potentially look at taking some of the funding from the White Rock Project, which is his passion and life's work. Many of y'all know that that is something that is so important to him, he's been fighting for, for a long time, is to get a community center in White Rock. And he was willing to offer up some of the money from that project because he believed so much in helping these schools. But also wanted to make sure that that project got done. And I think it's important the citizens know that about this man and his heart, because he believes in helping the children and didn't want them to go without a place next year, but also wants to make sure that the people of his community get something that they so desperately needed. And so, no, this project will still happen at White Rock Elementary School, and it, and we do need to find the money to make sure it happens because that neighborhood does deserve what he's offered, and this is a good way to be able to do both and still not put us in a huge hole. So we're going to deliver on those two things, and it may not be that we have to take this money. But again, we are here to serve the people and all the citizens of our city, little people, big people, young people, old people. It's not about political games, not for, not for everybody, anyway. Sometimes, it is literally just about doing what is right. And Councilman Taylor and I have had many conversations, along with other people up here, about just doing what is right. And I believe that right now is one of those times. Yes, we have to be good stewards with money, absolutely. And we're trying to do that with the taxpayer dollars. And we've heard about the amphitheater plenty of times. $5 million of that, federal money, not your money, taxpayers of Lynchburg. $3 million of it was so we could complete that project. And I know that there's going to be plenty of our citizens who will get to enjoy that space when it gets here, families who will get to enjoy it. And those of you who don't support the project, I'm sorry, but there'll be lots of us who will be able to enjoy it. But in the meantime, what we're discussing tonight are little people and where they need to be able to go and a plan and place that needs to happen. And these are the options on the table. And again, the best way that we could find them if we need to tap into it. Ms. Whit, is regarding the holding in reserves until we know where, where the state is and everything, so how, can you kind of go into how that will look? So, we'll wait until, so obviously, we'll have voted on our budget. The state will finalize its budget maybe around the same time, hopefully. Then what? Will we have to make an amendment to our budget then if we have to release the funds to the schools?
Correct. What we would do is include 1.6 million dollars. We would take it out of the capital fund, put it back in the general fund, hold it in, in a reserve in the resolution that you would adopt for the budget. And then at some point, it would come back to council if schools needed that money and it would take council action to appropriate that money to transfer to schools.
Okay. Councilman Halgason? And then, and then you want to go?
You know, when we're looking at this, I know we're getting off on lots of different tangents, but I guess the first one i- is what is, is really looking at the importance of why the schools should have a definitive operating budget. We have an eight-page document as opposed to what used to be given. Big book. When you're spending 140 million dollars, you should actually do some due diligence. You should actually present showing where the money is going. The city budget is several hundred pages. How big is this? 600, 500? 400 and some, yeah, 470 pages. And they give us an eight-page budget. With that, it didn't have lots of things in that budget. You know, that's why we're having this discussion today. We're having this discussion today and I think Greg pointed out, and I think those numbers are even bigger, what I've discovered is bigger than even the low end. You know, if we, if we, because of the schools are going to be getting more money from state aid, if they're going to be getting more money from the state, I look, look at it anywhere between 2.6 million and 7.4 million. And you're looking at, that's based on their current ADM, which they had, had assumed to be pretty low. These numbers can be a whole lot higher and that should be incumbent, granted, they, they don't know what's going to happen, but it's not going to be lower than the, than the governor's budget, which was another 2.6 million at the lower ADM numbers, the 7161. It is going to be a much bigger number already coming in from the state. And that, that's part of the job of the school board to making sure that the school administration gives them a budget that isn't just a few little pages on an Excel spreadsheet, but an actual document that they can go through. And they can say, here's where the numbers are going. Here's the number of students. We've seen lots of things on here. I'm thankful that Greg and Winter, we had lots of discussions regarding ADM. I mean, I've got different numbers like every other day regarding ADM. They're using some of the ADM in the budget, but they're using, having a, they're using the, the 7161 in the budget, but listing the ADM as 7,300 in, in our pages in our budget. That's why it's a whole lot less money. There's no way in the world that this budget year, the state of Virginia was going to give 67 million for local, when last year, they gave 68 billion. That was a non-starter right there. They put in their budget 67 million. Going from 67 million even to the governor's budget of 69 some million, right there, that's 2.6 million dollars more. The general assembly said, no, we're not going to do the governor's budget. We're going to do the general assembly's budget. Well, the general assembly's budget's up to 74 million. I mean, you're looking at seven, I think your numbers, you had like six, can you back up a couple of slides, Donna? Yeah, I mean, when you're, when you're looking at these numbers, I mean, you're looking at the 74 million, uh, close to 74 million, 73 by the Calc tool for upcoming budget. They submitted 67. That's a huge difference. And so, with that now, you, you know, and I get it, you know, council is saying, oh, this is sad and, and the schools may close. Well, let me tell you, by state law, we could give this extra money to the schools and they could close the schools. We could not give this extra money to the schools and they could keep the schools open. That's incumbent upon the school board. That's why it's so critical that we appoint people that are going to actually do their homework. You know, sadly, what's happened is a lot of these folks that just got appointed, they're trying to do their homework and sometimes politics get into play and people jump in and, and, you know, start saying on council, here's what schools need to be doing and whatnot, and here's what you need to do and keep this open and here's more money and here's all that and that. That's not the job of city council. The school board needs to do its job. We need to make sure we appoint people that are going to ask tough questions. Seeing a budget that is eight pages, the mini-budget, I was shocked, you know, when I asked for the budget. Oh, yeah, the budget is going to come from the superintendent said, oh, we'll give you the budget and if, you know, by last Tuesday. Get this budget. It's eight pages. Normally, you have a big document. You'd look at where all the money is. On that budget, there still wasn't any money for that all-in money. I didn't see that in, anywhere to be found in there. Lots of these different things, you know, I hate to see this movement of shells or whatnot, but it, it, it doesn't bode lots of confidence. You know, if the ADM is up as it is, as Greg pointed out, there's going to be a lot of extra funds just based on the per pupil, the extra per pupil. What is that, about 6,000 per pupil extra somewhere?
I'm not sure.
6 to 7,000?
The amount per pupil, but it's, it's 1.6 million dollars more based on the governor's proposed budget between the, the lower ADM and the higher ADM.
Yeah, just for the extra ADM. That doesn't include some of the other money that is coming extra in the basic aid and whatnot. So, when I look at this, I think it's a good thing to say, let's hold off on spending of other projects. Putting them in the reserve on the city side is a prudent thing to do. But with that, that really does beg the question, is this 1.6 million that we have in reserve tonight, is that something we're going to just say, oh, well, since you've been so prudent, spend it however you want? I looked at some of those numbers, which we'll be getting to tonight, but these numbers, I think, make us all question. So, before we said, let's spend this money and, and take that money that was in a contingency because I think we could take that 1.6 million in the contingency, keep that, don't spend it. You roll that over, now that adds to the other 1.6 million, so now you're at 3.2 million if needed. I don't think they're going to need it because the state is bringing in lots more money. You know, I got a feeling, though, if we come to the table and say, hey, here's 3.2 million to keep the schools open. What do you think the schools administration may say? I can see what they'd say. Well, we need 4.2 million. Eh, we actually need 5.2 million. They're going to ask for more money in spite of the fact that, yes, here, we're going to give it to you. That's just what's happened and what I've seen historically for 20 years because it's always needing of more money this, this budget year that we're looking at today. They talked about a couple of things. Oh, sales tax revenue's down. Sure. Basic aid's up. Some of those monies, I think we've asked lots of questions. They said, oh, the utilities are up. Was it really up 40%? Were they off that much? So, I really, I, I, I hope that what we can do is, a- as the vice mayor asked, if we can not give this money until there's really proof. I think we can, we can make sure that there's proof that the 1.6 million is needed to go from contingency to, to instruction tonight for 2024. That is going to be then hopefully not spent because it's not needed because we're getting some extra correct numbers and figures. That can then be utilized for next year. Yeah, it would be because it'd be one-time money. It's one-time money that's not spent and we'd vote for it. Absolutely. You're shaking your head no, but it'd be one, it'd be extra-
You're kind of mixing views.
No, no, not.
Less money from the state for '24 because of how the, the governor moved that, those, that money.
So, so some of that money was moved and it's actually, when you look at the all-in money, the extra 3.7 million, I recognize that 70% of it's for tutoring, but there's other percentages that are used for other things. The basic aid numbers-
To be spent over two years.
The email that they sent, the city manager, which we got, it showed, oh, yes, sales tax was down 1.2 million. But in that same email, it didn't say basic aid was up 1.2 million. It didn't say that there's a compensation supplement of an extra 392,000. It, it didn't show the extra, I think they did talk about the all-in per pupil funding of an extra 3.7 million, but then they said, the caveat is that it can't be used for just whatever. It has to be used 70% of it for tutoring and whatnot. So, I do believe that, I think they may need to make a better case of why they need that money tonight. If they don't make a good case of why it's really needed, that extra 1.6 million would not be spent this year. That then falls to fund balance, an extra 1.6 million of cash that could be then utilized in conjunction with this low-end extra money from the governors or the general assembly's budget, coupled with deferring of the, whether it be the White Rock Project or deferring the CAD system, either one, you're then having it in reserve. But I think you can then add this extra 1.6 on top of that reserve. And I think all of that makes it, where there's going to be plenty of funds. So, you know, when we're looking at the schools budget, I, I do hope that people on the school board, I wish the superintendent and the, you know, the revolving door about the CFOs would actually give the numbers and give them accurate and, and show presentations because there's no way on earth, what they presented to you was going to be 67 million from the state. Especially when you see the governor's budget at 69 million. So, the good thing is, the schools have now come out and I think confirmed that their ADM is higher than what the state Calc tool was. Great. That's why I asked for that for the last several months. I said, what is your ADM? Well, we'll get it to you. We'll get it to you. They finally got it to us just a few weeks ago, which is hard to believe, but if it's true, great. If it's true, that means more money because we, the state gives more per pupil. And that's for 2024, this budget. That isn't included in here. So, if the ADM is up this year compared to what it was going to be, and if next year's budget is higher, as Greg pointed out, I think we're, we're in a good city. So, I think, you know, but again, the school board, once we give them the money, they can do it or they cannot do it. It's up to them. That's why I think it's critical that we have it in reserve on the city side as opposed to just giving it extra to the, to the schools.
Dr. Wilder?
Thank you for the information. I really appreciate it and scenarios. Thank you for you and your team and, and the finance team and the city team for working together to find the funds, to see how we can move certain things around. So, I do appreciate that. I really support the, the idea that you presented about moving the money from the CAD program to the White Rock Center and then financing the product of White Rock Center. And you said we do have that capacity for that?
That's correct.
Appreciate that. And also, could we also use some historic tax credits for that White Rock Project? So, maybe some other funding resources as well for that project and see it come to fruition. Thank you for that. Also, now, I remember some years ago, well, two years ago, we were looking at the, the capacity of the city needs, the caps, some of the capital projects. I think it was Dr. Mortimer was here. He laid out the plan, like a 20-year plan, and it just listed, it was overwhelming. It listed all the projects that we needed over the next like 20 years. And so many times, keep, well, sometimes people think we have extra money sometimes, to that nature. But if you look at the, really the needs that we have in our city for capital projects, it's in the millions, almost like in billions of dollars of needs we have for our city. So, it's not like influx of cash just sitting around, waiting around, wasting that kind of thing. It's so many projects that we do need. Sometimes we'll put things off or put a roof off or put a road. I get calls every day, can they repave my street? Can we repave this street? Can we do this? Why are my lights not on? Why is the trash this? It's always something the person will additional assistance for. So, again, it's not like money just sitting somewhere. We have so many needs and we just prioritize those needs and make the best judgments for our city and for our citizens and to be prudent with those resources that we have. I appreciate the efforts of your team. Always, I'm just so amazed at how you can keep all this clear. It's such a, you're such a blessing to our city and we're so thankful. Thank you.
Oh, Councilman Taylor? Any questions?
Couple of things. Do we take care of doing federal tax withholdings from our city employees?
Yes.
Okay. So, the reality is that we take federal tax dollars out of our city, Lynchburg City employees' paychecks, send it to the federal government?
Income tax, yes.
And then federal funds turn around and pay federal dollars for projects in Lynchburg? Is that right?
What was that last part?
Federal, federal funds, federal dollars pay for projects, portions of projects in Lynchburg. So, so our folks in our city actually do contribute federal tax dollars. Those are their tax dollars that are coming back to the district, so to speak, right? Coming back to Lynchburg. I just wanted to point that out. So, the agenda item we're on right now is budget reconciliation. And I've got a question about the budget. And the question that I have about the budget is I notice there's something back in this budget that wasn't in last year's budget, but it's zeroed out for the foreseeable future in the CIP. What did we get out of the 4.5 million dollars we spent on the Florida Avenue sidewalk that appears to be canceled?
No, it's not canceled. There's no new appropriation.
So, what did we get for 4.5 million?
We haven't spent that.
So, where is that money?
Part of it was revenue share money that we haven't received because the project has not moved forward and the rest of it, I think, was line of credit that we haven't borrowed for.
So, we wanted to do that project, the original, the cost for the original scope of the project?
15.6 million.
It ended up being, and I think probably this-
Originally 10 million.
Originally 9.9, I think, is what it was.
Yes. So-
Just rewatched the video.
Yeah.
We, I'm, I'm not sure the exact amount of, of money we have appropriated and access to at this point, but we have kind of shrunk the scale of the, the project down, worked with Councilman Dr. Wilder and Councilman Taylor to design a project that's going to fit within the scope of the funding that we have available. That project is in design right now and once it comes out of design, we'll, we'll have, we'll, we'll construct the project. And I can't remember the exact scope. We can get this information to council. But if I remember correctly, it will run a sidewalk from essentially the Jubilee Detention Center up through the, the, what's the name of the neighborhood at the-
James Crossing.
James Crossing. So, that, 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 the project scope has been shrunk. Working with the railroad, getting that sidewalk under that railroad trussel or even around it, which we looked at, it's just, it's really expensive and, and some of the solutions were just too cumbersome.
I just want to point out that when I was a vice president for the Lynchburg Firefighters Association, I tried to tell you guys that was impossible. We all did, right? What they were trying to do there for that money. But, but I was just curious about that. So, the 4.5 million dollars has gotten us the, the prior appropriations. What is that getting for us?
It, it'll get the sidewalk portion that we're, that we're talking about.
And is that all we're going to end up spending?
That's all that's been appropriated and approved at this point in time.
So, so we're looking at basically, we've, you know, initially, there was, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, we had prior appropriations of 4.3 million. This is right out of the, the FY '23 budget that was adopted. Prior appropriations of 4.3 million. Planned FY '23 was 75,000. Planned FY '24 was 1.3 million. So, I'm assuming we kind of just didn't even appropriate that 1.3 million that was supposed to be planned for the current budget year because when you look up in the PDF file, Florida, when you search Florida in the FY, the, nothing comes up.
In '25 budget?
In the '24 budget, the budget we're in right now.
Okay.
Nothing comes up. Were there any funds appropriated for that project in the current year? So, so- year? So, so we stopped appropriating funds for that. And what we're going to do is what we've.
What we have funds to support.
What we have, what we have funds now. Okay. I was just very curious about that because I was looking at it. It wasn't in last year's budget. I see that it's back in this year's budget. I'm glad that we've got the 4.5 million prior appropriations to do something with. And I think that that sounds like actually a, you know, a reasonable, reasonable plan to do that. The grade is pretty hellacious on that road. But I was just very, very curious about where that 4.5 million dollars went.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to offer, Ms. Witt, I don't have a question for you. So, if you'd like to sit, please feel free to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
There's something I'd like to address, at least with the school closure component. There was a comment made on the radio today insinuating the motivation behind what this plan is to what some of us believe is the right thing. That the motivation was political, that the, it was not simply just to find a solution to a complicated issue. And that decision should be made analytically. And I must say to my colleague, it is crucial that we address issues like school closures with an undue political influence. And I couldn't agree more. However, such a statement in an attempt to frame this solution as a politically motivated, as politically motivated is not only disingenuous, but also deflects attention from the urgent matter at hand, which is the closure of two schools a year ahead of schedule with no plan for these families and their children or where they go. By dismissing real solutions from our residents as mere political posturing, this response fails to acknowledge the real consequences that are at stake. With no immediate action from council like this plan that has been submitted today, which I emphatically support, these schools, which overwhelmingly serve Ward 4, the district I represent, more than any other, will be negatively impacted. They'd be forced to close a year ahead of schedule, causing significant harm, most critically, to Ward 4. I concur. Let's prioritize this with analyt, analytical data-driven solutions over partisan rhetoric. Unfortunately, this comment is nothing more than, again, the pot calling the kettle black. I, for one, will not sit by while Ward 4, my constituents are the ones most negatively impacted by this situation, forced on us by the school administration. Closing Sandusky in a few short weeks ahead of schedule, a year in advance, would force 600 students and families into chaos. Where do they go? What's the plan? We could jam them into nearby schools, but guess what? That's Paramount Elementary School, another Ward 4 school. There's still 240 students left. Where do those students go? Heritage Elementary? It might just be right across the street in Ward 3, but half of it serves, guess what, where? It's Ward 4. And it gets even worse. What's the plan? Where do the children in my district go, Mr. Helgason? Let's serve the best interests, interests of our community, not political agendas. If one thinks prematurely, closing these schools a year in advance with no plan for their families is the best path for the city, then I challenge you, I dare you, to vote against this plan that, that the staff has just presented. Let's vote it in and lock it in for the year so that we can plan accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to respond. You know, obviously, it's, you can read into whatever you want and make the assumptions of whatever you want. But since that was me on the radio, absolutely, I stand by it 100%. Analytical versus political. These decisions that we're making, some of you haven't been here for a while. I remember the first day the superintendent came to Lynchburg. I talked to her directly and said, guess what? We've been losing kids for the last 15 to 20 years. You got to do something to manage enrollments. And she said, absolutely, we're going to work on it ASAP. That was five years ago. So, I can, I can hear the concern of what's happened today, the fact that there isn't a plan. Well, who does that lie on? Does that lies on our shoulders? Or the fact that the superintendent hasn't done anything those five years when I first met with her, the, the first week she got here? I was, we had a committee that was getting together to look at managing enrollments, to look at the, the outside of schools, to say what can be done. Because we're having, it's not just been a one year. It's been 25 years. I've given you all the chart where we lost over 2,000 kids. We hired consultants. One of the consultants came in and said, there's a longer timeframe. There's been 3,000 less kids today than there were 30-some years ago. We've known this is happening. They've known this is happening. So, with that being the case, they're the ones that needs to actually do it. Secondly, when we look at what the schools have done and the, who signs off on the, the plan, their comprehensive plan to manage enrollments, last four years, two years, they failed. Then they failed. The last two years, though somehow, they passed. The school board superintendent and the previous school board chair has to sign off on it and says, oh, we passed because we have a plan to manage enrollments. I've asked city staff. I've looked. I haven't seen a plan. Have you seen, guys seen a plan? There hasn't been a plan to manage enrollments. Cooper Weldon talks about which is what is utilized as far as looking at demographics. They look at the birth rate. They look at the kids. They look at how many are going to public school versus private and homeschooling. For, over the next five years, another 577 less kids. With that being the case, the school board made a choice seven months ago. They said, here's what we're going to do. Granted, I think they could have made a better choice, but that's their choice. I think they could have easily said, Darrington is a school of under, only 160 kids in it. To me, that'd probably been the easy one to pick. I didn't jump up and down and say, oh, you need to do that, or don't do this or do that. But, because it's their choice. It's not our choice. It's not council's choice. It's not a political choice. It's their choice from an analytical standpoint. With that being the case, those last four years, the last five years that the superintendent's been here, where they're going to manage enrollments, nothing's happened. The last four years, where there are two years where they failed to have the comprehensive plan says what they're going to do to manage enrollments, that's failed. What's happened now, when the consultants, they've hired a couple consultants, spend quarter million dollars on one and not know how much on the other, that looked at the, the buildings, the school buildings, the, the structures, plus they looked at the, the redistricting. Well, that hasn't happened. You know, and now I get it. I mean, I get it that it's, that it's kind of at the last minute that they're doing it, but it was done seven months ago. And I certainly wish the school board would have said, rather than changing things what they voted on, is actually did what their charge was and what they said they were going to do and what they voted on. Because I don't think that vote has changed. And so, now with it being the case, where I do think it becomes political, is when people say, oh, well, maybe if we give more money, then we can keep things open. And what I said on the radio as well this morning, is just what Greg pointed out today, what Donna pointed out in our slides. There's a whole lot more money coming from the state that they haven't even shown. That can be adjusted. Thirdly, if we give them the money, no sense, no, they don't have to keep the schools open. They can close them. If we don't give them the money, they could still keep the schools open. Because it's them looking at what they're doing with their budget. Now, with this being the case, I recognize they haven't implemented their plan sadly. For years, they've just said, oh, well, we have to keep up with this, the districting that was done back in the 70s. I pushed for them to redistrict, and they finally said, oh, well, man, we can redistrict. They should have been doing this for the last 10 years. So, it should have been an analytical decision. It shouldn't have been a political decision. Lots of this could easily been done. I recognize that, that now it's a difficult thing. But my goodness, if anybody's seen in the news, there's games that they have on, like when they watch council. What's that little game where you put the little boards if somebody says something? If you hear the word of declining enrollment, you get a bingo or whatever that is? Have you seen that? Winner? Oh, kind of neat. Yeah. So, it's a bingo. So, when somebody says declining enrollment, you get to put a check on there. Well, has that just been happening for one year? Has that been talked about for 20 years? Because this enrollment's declining, steeper than, than Aspen is out in Colorado. So, we know that's the case. We know it's happening. And, and the school board should actually make the choices, make those tough calls. The city manager presented a budget based upon the fact that what they presented to him, based on their needs, he said, here's what we're going to do. And for years, for the last 20 years, quite frankly, lots of things have suffered, I think, on the city side. Our public safety has suffered. Because for the last 20 years, we've had a pig in the poke. We had a, not a pig in a poke, we've had a, a pig and a snake, rather, to digest 80 million of debt service for Heritage, 29 million for Sandusky. That's 100 and, almost, you know, 100 and, over 100 million, 109 million dollars of debt service that had to be covered. With that, for years, everybody said, oh, the school needs more money. Schools need more money. That's happened. Sadly, what we've seen is a decline in actually the results. We've just seen a decline in the enrollment. Now, what we've heard at our last budget hearing, the public hearing last week, lots of people said, oh, you're bare bones. You're giving the school bare bones. We've given more to instruction than ever before. We've heard people say, oh, the tax rate has slashed the budget. But then at the same breath, they said, oh, well, all the other city departments are getting more. Oh, so one department's getting 11% more. This department's getting that. Because what's happened? Is this year a record amount of tax, real estate tax, even though we set the rate at 89 cents? So, hearing things that are just political theater, and lots of political theater, comes on the right, comes on the left, comes from both sides. We heard lots of political theater last year, saying that we were going to gut, we've gutted the schools. I've heard lots of things that said, oh, my goodness, you're going to, the schools are tanking because of, of certain things, you know, which, again, lots of it was lots of rhetoric, lots of it was political, and we need to make decisions that are factual and analytical, that are for the best interest of the city, the best interest of the city schools, best interest for children, and the best interest for our taxpayers. And I think we can do that. Now, with that being the case, I think this plan coming forward, with the city, and I guess it's not a plan, it's what I've said for the last two months, or three months, that, that a lot more was coming from the state than was put in the budget. We're back to that. Yep. More money's coming from the state than was put in the budget. Now, if we take that money and defer a couple of projects, great, I'm all for that. Be happy to vote for that. Provided we're not spending that extra money, provided we're, we're actually setting it aside in reserve. I would also like for us to really contemplate the fact that before tonight, when we spend an extra, say, hey, go ahead and spend an extra 1.6, 1.7 million in the contingency, that we really look and say, is this really needed? Is this critical? Or can we use those funds to augment next year's budget, which I think we can. So, thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
Do you remember one of the questions you asked me on occasion when it comes to budget season?
What do you want your legacy to be?
No.
Oh.
No, that's not it.
Asking each of you that, but.
I know you do, you do. But, thank you. That's actually not where I was going. Shoot.
Sorry.
The question is, is you let me know when you're ready. Mr. Manager, I'm ready. This was the, unless something else that I'm forgetting, I'm ready for the budget. Let's vote. Because this was the main piece that I was digging into. There's a lot in the capital improvement plan I'm still not thrilled with. There's a lot of other things that maybe should be tweaked, but overall, I think we're, we're pretty darn close. Now, if I'm ready, may not mean the rest of us are ready, but if that gives you an indication. And the reason I think I'm ready is, is this today, what we've gone over. This plan regarding Sandusky and TC Miller is creative and fiscally responsible. Well done. Councilman Taylor, thank you for kicking the idea out there. This does a lot. The fact that it keeps, for the next year, it keeps Sandusky and TC Miller open for the next year, keeps all capital projects moving forward, all city services moving forward unimpeded, and reduces city debt, all at the same time. Couldn't have dreamed it in, in my wildest dreams. I couldn't have come up with it. By taking cash funds from the White Rock renovation project and re-signing them to a contingency fund that we hold on to, that ensures we're controlling the narrative. We're controlling where these dollars go. We're expressing good intention that they're, they're for keeping these schools moving, no doubt. And the fact that it keeps White Rock project, as Councilmember Wilder pointed out and, and has been articulated before, that it keeps the White Rock project moving forward at the same time, it's brilliant. It's a creative solution to a complicated issue. It saves the taxpayer dollars, which is the best part out of all of it, and it protects these schools from an early and premature closure. I got to thank everybody who's been involved, but thank you guys for putting this together and preparing it. This is exactly what we need to move forward, at least from my perspective. Let's do it.
Mr. Benda, I know that you had, wanted to say something earlier possibly about maybe what Vice Mayor referenced.
Yes. And again, I should have been better cued. But I do ask everybody, what do you want your legacy to be? And, and yes, the other ones, tell me when you're ready. So, what I'd say is, and I want to acknowledge the hard work that all of you have put in. We've started, if you look at the budget calendar, we started in December with the budget retreat. And we've had joint meetings and budget reconciliations. There is one more scheduled. It's a special meeting next Tuesday. It's just budget reconciliation. I think to the degree that the questions have been posed, other, with the exception about Florida Avenue and the capital project there. It, just looking for where council wants to go, we can certainly hold it next Tuesday, budget reconciliation. But the first vote would be on the 14th for the budget itself, which then you can also opine and give us feedback and what have you. And then the second is on the 28th, I believe, is how it would work. So, just wondering, council's overall appetite or desire to have a special meeting next Tuesday?
How does it feel about just going, not having then special meeting next week?
I have a question.
Oh, Councilor Wilson.
So, I just want to clarify something with you, Ms. Witt, and stay there, please. The question that I have, I know that the Vice Mayor said canceled, right? But we're not canceling the CAD project. You said that we're putting it on hold, correct?
At some point, we'll have to replace the CAD system.
And that is pretty important.
Yes.
Because it is. We're not.
It was falling apart when I was there.
Yeah.
In the, in the next year or two.
So, so, so just to be clear, where is that going to end up? If we're going to take part of that line of credit, that 4.7 million, if we're going to take part of that and apply it to this, are we going to have, the question I have is, are we going to have the funds in the budget prepared to move on that if that happens in the next budget year?
It's already appropriated. That project is already appropriated.
Okay.
But we're just not moving forward to utilize that line of credit until a decision's made that where they're ready to move forward. So, we'll figure out. There will be capacity. And a number of things can happen. We can look at it again the year end of this year to see what funds are available. There could be an option there. Or, you know, all those capital projects are very fluid. So, we can look again in next year's budget, should we need to find that. Some moving, projects move further and faster than others. We can work that out.
Yeah, because I just want to, I just want to make it absolutely clear that that is, for me personally, that is a huge priority, that we have to, we have to.
It's a priority.
Replace that CAD system.
To everyone, absolutely.
And I am actually thrilled that they said no, rather than just spending the money on something that potentially didn't meet the needs. I know we don't, the police chief's not here right now, but I was going to, going to thank him, thank him for that because it's, it's critical to get that right. So, So, that's all I got for now.
Councilman Missions, while you are still speaking, how do you feel about just having the special meeting next week? Are you comfortable just skipping that and going ahead and having our regular scheduled meeting for May 14th to start voting on the budget? I'm just kinda getting a feel, like a consensus.
I think that...
Well, I'm letting him talk.
It really comes down to, I mean, it comes down to what we end up doing tonight, is what, is, that's where I'm at with that. I can't make that decision until I see what we do tonight.
Councilman Taylor?
May 14th?
May 14th, yeah.
May 14th.
You're fine with that? Okay. Vice Mayor Frawley?
Don't ya?
Your thumbs up. You're good with skipping next week and just going to 14th?
Let's roll.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
I'm ready.
Councilman Dolan?
I'm ready for May 14th, especially if we don't have to sit and listen to the same rhetoric.
Okay, Councilman Helgeson?
Well, then, since we're not meeting May 14th, we'll give you some more rhetoric right now, then, since, you know, the one thing that, I guess, actually isn't rhetoric, but it's true, and I believe it, we had a $50 million surplus, you know, over and above, then we had a $66 million surplus, which obviously some of it was the fund balance, but we had a lot of money over. We did talk about originally making sure that we could give that back in tax relief. I appreciate the lowering the trash fees, but tax relief was one thing that helped create that surplus. I'm ready for the May 14th, because it doesn't, to me, appear that there is enough people willing to say, let's make a concerted effort to give money back to the taxpayers. You know, we have lots of different projects that we're willing to spend for new projects, the cash outside of the budget, not as willing to say, let's figure out a concerted effort to, you know, figure out how to keep schools open and how to spend the money on various projects, but it'd be nice to have such a concerted effort to say, what can we do to really alleviate the burden on our citizens? I recognize that isn't happening on this budget, I was hopeful that it was, but since that's, doesn't seem like there's appetite for that, I guess we can go right to May 14th, and hopefully tonight, what we'll do is not go again and spend more money with every vote that we have, but we'll, instead of spending that 1.6 million dollars tonight, we'll keep that in the reserves until there's a really, a bona fide idea that says, yes, it's critical that we get this money, or no, we can use this money to supplant the needs for next year in order to help those two elementary schools for next year. But if we spend, let's not spend the money tonight, and then we can come together and vote on this budget May 14th, and all be happy.
Well, you know, we are a, oh, sorry, Councilman Taylor?
Oh, excuse me.
Yes?
Do we not think that spending money for, on a community center in a low-income neighborhood is not beneficial to taxpayers?
If you're asking me the question, I'll be happy to answer. Normally, what happens with the budget process and the capital improvement process, it's not something that just says, hey, let's put some stickers up on a board. I think there can be a lot of benefit for improving, you know, neighborhood centers. But we put some stickers on a board, said, hey, we got, you know, 4 million bucks from the, from the federal government for a amphitheater, would you rather spend another 4 million bucks on spending more on an amphitheater? We put stickers on a board. We put stickers on a board on, for White Rock. We put stickers on a board that said, hey, let's spend money on extra artificial turf. Let's put stickers on a board rather than the normal deliberative process, more the analytical process, where we go through, just like the CAD system, just like Florida Avenue sidewalk, that was put on there as a good idea. It then kinda got flushed out and said, you know, maybe that isn't the best idea at this time. The Florida Avenue sidewalk originally was 9.9 million, and we talked about the problems that would happen with the train trestle, and it would, to 15 million, or 20 million, or whatever that's gonna be. Now, the city said, you know, eh, we can't do it. Instead of having the sidewalk that goes underneath the train trestle, we're shortening it tremendously. We're having it go to the juvenile detention center up to Greenfield Drive. That's what happens with a deliberative process, as opposed to just hearing something that may be a great project, but when we just off the cuff say, hey, here we got an extra 15 million bucks, what do you wanna do with it? And we put little stickers on a board as though we're kind of wishing for our Christmas list, I don't think that's the best analytical deliberative process. Things that rise to the top are things that we actually talk about and debate for years, and how we can do it. The White Rock Hill Neighborhood Center, it came up where Lynn Cag was using it, or the Head Start was using it for years. All of a sudden, Head Start said, oh, the building's not in good enough shape. So now it went to the city. I remember when Greg brought up this project, said, well, here's the 3.5 million, it may not fix it, but it's a start. That's not what you do. I mean, you know, the Bible gives us lots of discernment and wisdom as far as what we do. The fool doesn't count the cost before you start something. The fool looks, doesn't look at all the different unintended consequences before they start the project. So although that may be a great project, I think the deliberation helps the cream rise to the top. And so, it could be a wonderful thing.
You're invited to the grand opening.
Well, the grand opening, is it, is it now, I'd love to be at the grand opening.
Make, make sure I feed you well.
Good.
Madam Mayor.
We're gonna finish this conversation, because we've been talking for a long time. And here's what I wanna say, is that, first of all, the public hearing, I don't recall anybody showing up, asking for lower taxes. So the people had plenty of opportunity, like they did last year, to come and say what they wanted of this budget. And it was overwhelmingly filled in here with people from every political affiliation, and they spoke about schools this year. Last year, we heard about taxes. So this council made a decision about taxes last year. This year, we heard about schools, and we heard from our people who we're supposed to represent, and we were discussing schools. And I think Councilman Taylor made an excellent point, that you can absolutely show that you've returned the taxpayer dollars in multiple ways, one of which is going to be in how we use the White Rock Elementary School in the form of a community center. That is a return of the taxpayer dollars back to the people who will be using that in that neighborhood, and that's an excellent way to do it. The amphitheater will be a way to return taxpayer dollars to the peoples of the city who enjoy and will enjoy the amphitheater. And with some federal funds as well. Councilman Missions, thank you for pointing that out. The schools will be enjoyed by the children in Sandusky and TC Miller for one more year, 'cause we're gonna take some taxpayer dollars to return that back to those families, so that they have time for an appropriate plan. So we are returning taxpayer dollars back to the citizens in different forms with every decision that we've made and discussed tonight. Councilman Helgeson?
Yes.
Maybe not in the way that you're exactly describing, but we are doing that in all of these decisions. And if people had wanted it in a different way, lower taxes, or if you wanted to advocate more strongly for that, that's a discussion that should have been had. I haven't heard much about it. And again, we didn't have people come and advocate for that at our public hearing. So it sounds like a consensus of council is ready to move on to the 14th and start voting. So I think you have your answer, Mr. Bendah. We will move on to roll call. Dr. Wilder?
Thank you. Again, I wanna commend our community for coming out on Saturday to the Lynchburg City School Strings Program. They're celebrating 50 years of Mrs. Ginger Parish. It was amazing at the academy. I thank you to Dr. Brinnons and so many others that supported that project at the community foundation. Also, on Sunday, they had several hundred kids playing the violins, I know it rained out at the stadium, but they had them in EC glass. It was amazing, and it showed you the great things we have in our school system. I was like, 500 kids, I believe, playing the violins. That is just amazing. There's no other schools that I know in this area that have an amazing program like that. So I wanna commend our school system, as well as all of our community partners. That's what makes us so great together, we work together. I also wanna commend the Lynchburg United, having an EC glass on Saturday also, it was busy that day Saturday. Dr. Brown Dean was the guest speaker, and she's a phenomenal speaker. Again, we must be united together. We've seen two shootings, a young man lost his life last weekend, had two shootings on Sunday morning, a lady and a young gentleman that I know, was shot. So we need to be united more than ever to come against all this violence, and really work together to solve these situations in our community. Thank you.
Councilman Dolan? Councilman Helgeson?
Uh, no items.
Councilman Missions?
I think I'm gonna pass.
Councilman Taylor?
No.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Briefly, yes, I was invited to the Strings event. I do wish I was able to go, and I know it was a very wonderful event, and I commend them for their success. It's amazing, 50 years of that kind of a program, so, well done, well done, well done. I am looking for my notes, and I can't find it, 'cause my handwriting is atrocious. I think I found it, maybe. I did get an email, just, staff be advised, I'm gonna send it your way, just a couple concerns. It's also related to speeding. I feel like I'm beating, beating the bush on this one, but I will, I'll be sending it to you, so just be advised, there's a couple of enumerated concerns from this constituent that I'd like you to look into at some point. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything about that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I completely forgot what I was actually on the agenda for. Colleagues, this is the Virginia 250 Committee. It's crazy to think that, now, this is the 250th of the country, or the declaration, they're saying. 250th. I mean, this is a big deal. So, here's what's happening. There is a national movement, a national organization, as I understand it, that will be allowing localities like ours to solicit funds for the celebration. It's going to be a massive, massive event. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be historic. 250 years of the United States. The spearhead behind this, I believe is, I believe I'm allowed to say this, the spearhead behind this is the cemetery, Old City Cemetery, and they, the way the grant funds are working is they need a resolution adopted by council that empowers them to solicit the funds and start planning the event. That's all the resolution will be. Keep an eye on it, it'll be at your, at our next city council meeting as a business item briefing for our review. If you do have any questions, of course, you can ask me, but our staff knows a little bit more. And then I do know that our city attorney has explored any legal issues as far as pass-through funds, whether it needs to be through council, directly to the cemetery, what have you. But that's the gist of it, please keep an eye out for it, and it'll be very interesting to, hopefully all of us will be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of remarks I have. Next Thursday is the National Day of Prayer. We will be holding an event at the base of Monument Terrace at 8:30 a.m., from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. All citizens are invited to join me and participate. Also, Mayor's Youth Council multi-park cleanup event. The Mayor's Youth Council is hosting a multi-park cleaning event this Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon, and we need your help to make it a success. Our parks are cherished spaces where families gather, children play, and memories are made. However, they require regular maintenance to ensure they remain safe and beautiful for everyone to enjoy. That's why the Mayor's Youth Council are calling on their peers to join us in sprucing up Bigger's Park, Hollins Mill, and Riverside Park. This event promises to be both rewarding and fun. Participants will engage in activities such as litter cleanup to enhance the beauty and functionality of our beloved parks. It's an excellent opportunity to connect with fellow youth members while also giving back to the place we call home. But that's not all. In addition to our park cleaning efforts, we're also accepting donations to support the planting of trees within our community. Trees play a crucial role in enhancing air quality, providing shade, and creating a more sustainable environment for generations to come. Your contributions will help us green our neighborhoods and leave a lasting legacy of environmental stewardship. So mark your calendars and spread the word, let's come together as a community to make a difference and create a brighter future for all. Together, we can ensure that our parks remain vibrant and welcoming spaces for everyone to enjoy. For more details, please visit our Instagram at LYH underscore Mayor's Youth Council. And we will now highlight our city attorney's office. The city attorney's office provides a wide array of services to the city council, the city manager, and the clerk of council, city departments and agencies, and the boards and commissions of the city. These services range from handling real estate matters, drafting and reviewing complex legal documents, prosecuting and defending lawsuits on behalf of the city, writing legal opinions, writing resolutions and ordinances, and performing personnel investigations. The city attorney's office, in addition to its attorneys and other staff, includes a risk management division and the city's chief FOIA officer. The risk management division manages the city's self-insurance fund, provides safety and investigative assistance, and helps manage a variety of risks faced by the city. The chief FOIA officer serves as the main point of contact for citizens for purposes of handling requests under the Freedom of Information Act. The city attorney also serves as the parliamentarian and legal advisor to the city council. So thank you. Yay. Okay, closed session. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the potential resolution of a pending law enforcement lawsuit pursuant to sections 2.2-3711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss litigation and alternatives thereto being brought by the city against a private party pursuant to sections 2.2-3711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. They have a motion to go in a closed meeting.
So moved?
Second. And a discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Councilwoman Dolan? Yes? Councilwoman Helgeson?
No.
Councilman Missions?
Abstain.
Councilmember Taylor?
Dig one?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
You need to have...
Not going closed.